All right, I call to, I call the April 10th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Can I get a roll call?
Chair Andrew Carr.
Here.
Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Ron Heberlein.
Here.
Matt Constantine.
Here.
Sam Skoll.
Here.
Yana Semenova.
Here.
Jennifer Willard. Thank you.
Okay, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the planning commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing or a public work session tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. If you have not already, please fill out a testimony card and give it to the clerk. Also, please state your name and address for the record or state that your address is provided on the testimony card. Please come to the podium when you are called forward or unmute yourself on Zoom when the clerk requests. Anyone here to testify?
I currently do not have any attendees on Zoom.
Thank you. With no one here to speak, we, consideration of the minutes. The March 13th, 2024 minutes were previously distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. Next on the agenda is a work session for Frog Pond East and South Implementation Development Code. This work session session is a chance for the planning commission to gain additional understanding of and provide guidance on ongoing legislative projects prior to a public hearing. As a courtesy, the planning commission will, as time permits, allow for limited public comment on the topic. After staff have presented their report for the commission's purpose of continuing to understand the project. However, it should be noted that this is not a public hearing and any participants are encouraged to participate in the future public hearing for legal standing purposes. At this time, I call for city staff to present information they have prepared for the work session. Will staff please present?
Absolutely, I'd love to. So, Dan Polley, Planning Manager, here to talk about Frog Pond East and South. And thank you for taking the time to spend a sunny evening talking about Frog Pond East and South Development Code. So, really, there's two, as, as you're well aware, there's really two main topics that we've been discussing. The first one being variety standards, including target unit types and, and such, as well as citing and different citing and design standards. So as regards to the variety standards, really, tonight we have some follow-up information based on questions and inquiries and discussion in prior work sessions. And then we also want to share some refinements to the development standards in terms of things like setback, slot coverage, height, that, from prior discussion and feedback. With that, let's go into the follow-up information. The topics to cover tonight include a discussion, the maximum number of units that could conceptually be built out here, which is an interesting question. And it's an interesting exercise to calculate that. And then, as you're aware, a lot of what we've seen.
But, sorry, can I, is there a presentation that you're reading off of? Just wanted to double check, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Nicole, thank you for interrupting me before I went any further. I had it up, I had Zoom to share and then like. I had it up to share and then like, you guys kept talking and I'm like, okay, here I go. There's this, all right, well, here's, here's the first slide, isn't it beautiful? Here's tonight's agenda. Here's an image you've seen a time or two. And here are the topics we're covering tonight. Thank you, Commissioner Hendricks. So, maximum number of units, overall numbers. So what you've seen so far is pretty much you have it broken down by lot, by tax lot and sub-district. This sums it up overall, so kind of get a view of what we're actually getting when you think about it more globally. And with that, that parlay is well into a discussion of how does that actually compare to Vilbois with the numbers, which was a really, also a really interesting exercise to look at. Since we've talked about before how Vilbois and Frog Pond have a lot of similar goals, but because of kind of changes in state law and some other factors, had to approach it a different way. Get back to a couple of these questions that we, we continue to discuss about the percent of mobility-ready units and also 1,200 versus 1,500 for the threshold of small units. And finally, comparison to other UGB expansion areas that have not yet been built. So I think you'll find that interesting. So let's start with the maximum number of units. So, to do this, we went and, well, we, me, I guess, so. Looked at if we use 60% of multifamily, which is the maximum unit type, did some assumptions of, of density there. And then the next densest that likely to be built with townhouses, so the next 35% is there. And then you have a 5% of the smaller detached homes. So running that calculation, you're getting around 25 units per acre, which is fairly dense. Again, this is not what we realistically expect, but this type of combination could meet the design standards and the variety of standards. So, do you want to look at a cap? Then that's what it is. And really, that's the whole idea here. If, if the market and the need for housing directs the development community one way, we want to have that flexibility. We don't want to prevent regulatory barriers to needed housing. And that's one of the main components of this. So, there is flexibility, right? We're not defining what the product mix is now. We're setting some floors and some minimums, but what will happen over time, we're not sure, right? Talking to most developers now where the market on a suburban edge, there's, there's some momentum for detached homes, for sure. So, you know, right, right now, probably it'll go that direction, but this is the maximum. So just kind of give you an idea. It's more than double the minimum. It's about 80% more than the assume likely build-out and about double what, what, what the density is of Vilbois. Kind of give order of magnitude of what that maximum is. So let's sum up, going away from the maximum more to what we actually expect to be built based on what we know and conversations about market and expectations of current trends kind of continue. So a couple of things I want to point out on this slide is, you can see the numbers. Is first of all, this bottom line that's, that's bolded of how many units at minimum are we actually aiming for in these different target unit categories? So we're talking just over 300 middle housing units, minimum. So when talking, all this conversation about small units, minimum would be 91, so just under 100 units. And then the minimum number of mobility-ready units, you're talking about 160. The other thing that's interesting to look at, at least for me, may be helpful for you as well as this, this kind of illustrates without being in that huge table, how the math actually works to get to these minimum numbers. And as a reminder, we really went, did the math beforehand rather than putting formulas in the code. We talked about that, that's a simpler approach. It's more clear and objective when we go to development, less, less conversations later and more clear for everyone involved. So, what this table also is, as a reminder, the percentage that when we apply the 25, 10%, whatever it is, it's not applied to that minimum because there's some assumption baked into us that not just the minimum is going to be built. So we, so the application of those percentages was applied to 1,500 units. Note that the assumed total units is 1625, but we didn't count those vertical mixed-use units on Brisbane Street as part of that calculation. So the other thing you'll note here is, well, wait, you know, 20% of 1,500 is not 313. Just, so the reason that that's a little higher is because you're rounding these for each of these sub-districts and tax lots. And so with that rounded, it adds, it's not exact. So that's why those numbers are a little different. Right. So comparing Frog Pond East and Vilbois, interestingly, and I didn't know this, you know, before I did this math, that actually this math is that at build-out with what's been built and what's actually been entitled, we're at 20.2% middle housing roughly in Vilbois. That's just townhouses, there's some other like, couple condo buildings and things that could be classified as middle housing, but just looking at townhouses, we're right at 20%, which is compared to looking at about 19.3% minimum in middle housing for Frog Pond East and South. Mobility-ready, we're well, Vilbois is well above what would be required any way we look at it. A big reason of that is that there is a fair, there's 20% of, of Vilbois is multifamily. And multifamily tends to provide those single level accessible units at a higher rate than other, other unit types. They're typically half-stairs. And then interestingly, when you get to detached single family, you're right about 60% of the units. So Frog Pond East and South, you see the numbers here, you know, you're right around 20%, 10% and then right where we're aiming based on what the master plan was, about 50% detached single family. Not in this slider in your, or in your packet, but something that I've also read in the last few days and some documentation I've been reviewing is, in a couple of slides, I'll talk about comparison to master development areas that are in the planning stage. But also interesting to look at some of the percentages, I found in one of the documents for one of these future planning stages I was reviewing, that the actual percentages of other kind of master planned areas that are of similar age to Vilbois. So North Bethany in Washington County, for example, is about 43% detached single-family homes, 38% what you'd consider middle housing, mainly like townhouses, single-family attached, and 19% multifamily. Forest Heights, which is also in that area, a little older, 57% detached single-family, 35% single-family attached or middle housing, and 8% multifamily. So what we're really seeing from that, and we'll see as we look at others, is really we are in the ballpark. We're, we're, we're playing similar kind of levels of requirements, both with Vilbois and other similarly aged, recent master plans as well as planned master plans in the metro area. So looking at these other areas, which this includes Cooper Mountain in Beaverton, Witch Hazel South, which is on the south side of Hillsborough, as well as what's called River Terrace 2.0, which is near the new high school off Shoals in, in Tigard, right on the boundary between Tigard and Beaverton. So some interesting highlights here is all the plans include a housing mix, really focused on that middle housing and consistent with the requirements of the state statute and rules around middle housing. That, that idea we've talked a lot about, about, about type separation, encouraging a block-level mix of housing is something that's, that is, comes forward in all of those. Cooper Mountain, the draft plan, that was actually behind this in term, Frog Pond East and South in terms of adoption. They're looking at about 30% middle housing. However, that said, they don't have multifamily, so that's why that's a little different. They, they do require multiple housing types in a geographic area. Cooper Mountain has that idea, very similar to Frog Pond East and South where for your like, development area, if it's so big, you need to have two or three types of housing within that development area. Also, particularly River Terrace 2.0, that transect concept we've talked about where, you know, urban Form 1 is meant to kind of spread out to urban Form 3, those sorts of ideas are also in those master plans. So all these ideas that we've talked about that are adopted in the East and South master plan are something that we're seeing pretty consistent with the region and similar projects. So want to then skip to an important question the commission has continued to discuss is what data to really guide us in landing on the percentage of mobility-ready units? Sarah Pearlman, our, our assistant planner, talked to some other jurisdictions and really, as they contemplate similar regulations, though a lot of them haven't got to the point of adoption. Really, data that's been heavily relied on is American Community Survey from the Census Bureau and with the data about individuals with an ambulatory difficulty. Based on the American, the latest American Community Survey, that's 5.8% in Wilsonville, there is a margin of error of 1.3%, which is significant because it's such a small sample size. So you add the 1.3 to 5.8, you're within that ballpark of 7.5%. The thing to consider, which we've discussed here, and is that, you know, this isn't automatically, okay, you build the single level unit, you go and recruit someone that needs it to live there, right? It goes on the open market and it may or may not be bought by someone with an ambulatory difficulty. So from that, there may be an argument to actually put a bit of a buffer there. So at least there's some give that there is a, a good percentage still left for members of the community with an ambulatory difficulty. So I think 7.5 or 10% are both workable and defensible in terms of being, being able to be built, being able to reasonably be built in the market and are able to be backed up by, by data as a reasonable approach. At this point, I'd recommend 10%. I think it's, it's a round number and it also accommodates for, again, that buffer for where it's not an exact match. But happy to hear your input on that and we can do the math either way. Well, we'll be bringing forward more pricing data in the coming couple of months. Did do some research on that question of really what is the price difference? For if you have a threshold at 1,200 versus 1,500 square feet to define that small unit. And looked at that both for townhouse and detached, this is suburban communities in both Washington and Clackamas community counties, sorry, that are recent builds. And so you're looking at about a 5% cost differential for that added 300 square feet, which, which aligns with the prior data I shared with the planning commission, showing that there is a big kind of break at that 1,500 where prices start escalating a lot more after that 1,500. So that remains consistent with that data. Interestingly, you can see kind of the cost differential that comes between a townhouse and detached. And I mean, obviously, there's always factors such as finishes and stuff, but, you know, looking across the newer market in Washington and Clackamas counties, that's kind of what's, what's coming to the surface. So if it's all right, I'd like to hold questions and let me go through the development code and then I'll have a slide for questions and we can talk about all of it at once. So development standards, last time we talked about this, we've gotten some good feedback from the planning commission, had some feedback as well from council, as well as had our consultants that helped develop part of it, MIG, re-look at, at some of this, as well as additional feedback from the development community and staff taking another look at it and just testing this more. So let's go through kind of what those refinements based on the additional feedback and testing that have come to surface. The first one is this feedback, right? We talked, we've previously mentioned no minimum lot size, that verbiage even was. We've previously mentioned no minimum lot size, that verbiage even wasn't really well liked, because in fact, there is a minimum lot size. It's just not a defined value, right? It's, the lot does need to be sized to accommodate a unit plus meeting setbacks, lot coverage, things like that. So essentially, that, the, the columns added back in that states that fact. And as a concise manner as, has been edited to this point, so. Next is, is some suggestion which staff supports from the development community to give some flexibility to height, is essentially in a lot of our zones, that height limit is based on a typical, like more traditional architecture. So some more modern architecture may have start taller stories for whatever unit type it is. And so giving that flexibility, but keeping kind of the maximum four story in urban Form Type 2, though we do expect a lot of that will still be three story. And then three story as the maximum in urban Form Type 2. We'll note that for urban Form Type 3, that the three story would only be allowed if there's certain minimum setbacks. The draft right now shows the minimum, a 20-foot minimum for front yard setback, but we're also looking at potential side yard minimum, increased side yard setbacks as well to create that additional light in there when you have the taller building. Then talking about side setbacks, really simplifying, looking to simplify that and, and get down to really what is most important. So what's recommended is five feet as is the minimum across the board. However, there is, that is adjusted to be able to be smaller for narrower buildings in urban Form Type 1 or 2. Essentially, for anything less than 70 feet, it's allowed to be three and a half feet. And then between 70 and 100, it's a percentage of the building width. So for example, for an 80-foot wide building, you do the math, you end up with a four-foot setback allowed. The other thing here is we've simplified the, the standards, we're not putting any special standards about side yards in this section. There is potential for that, but that would live in the general section. There's simply what, what we're looking at, there is a standard that says when you have a narrow side yard, essentially five feet or less, that to avoid it just becoming a wasted space, you have to have pedestrian access to go through it to either a rear yard or an alley. And then once you have that, adding some language potentially to our nuisance code saying you can't, you know, have vegetation or junk or anything that blocks that pedestrian passage. So that would be universal across all residential development in this city if, if we go that direction. But finally, some feedback from council on that, and I will update the, the commission further on that matter in our next work session. And finally, we talked, you may recall our conversations about whether to have Florida area ratio or lot coverage. We have, from the discussion, we have gone towards lot coverage. So then the question became what lot coverage and how much variation do we allow there? Really did want to still, two things we, that are really driving what we're looking at, we want to make sure that we, and these are principles we generally use throughout development of the code. First of all, where can we be consistent with other zoning codes where we know it works? Where can we make sure it's as simple as possible to get the job done? And also make sure we're not creating barriers to desired unit types. So 80% works for a couple reasons. First of all, it is the most comparable kind of zone is the village zone when it comes to the non-detached home type units for townhouses or apartment buildings. So that has an 80% lot coverage for that type of building in the village zone, which I would argue has worked out pretty well, hasn't become an issue as we've, as we've implemented Villebois over the last couple decades. Then most zones for smaller lots, you're talking like less than 5,000 square feet, particularly less than 4,000 square feet, is 75% of that lot size across the city. So rather than having 80 and 75, let's just make it simple and call it 80, where this will control the lot size, but also it doesn't become a barrier anywhere along the way. We have discussed, it's not reflected here in your staff report, is there are some circumstances, though probably fairly rare, in the East and South context where there may be a larger lot for a single family home. In that case, we suggest adding a footnote where if it's a single family lot over like 5,000, 6,000 square foot lot, then you would apply the same lot coverage for the equivalent size that exists in Frog Pond East and, or Frog Pond West. But other than that, it's just 80% simple across the board. So with that, you'll see the questions here for the Planning Commission from this work session, looking for feedback on the refined development standards. Let's, let's, since that's probably freshest right now, let's, I'd suggest talking about that first, and then talk about this additional information on variety standards and how does that impact your input? And finally, let's, let's go back to that, the mobility ready unit question. So Chair, I will turn it back to you.
Do you want us to cover each question and have every commissioner comment on, or do you want each commissioner to hit all four of these points?
That's up to you. It'd probably be helpful, I think there's enough time and probably be helpful to do, to hit on one at a time.
One at a time, all right. So why don't we, we'll start with Commissioner Constantine and hit the feedback on refined development standards or any questions you have around that. We'll just go around the things.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question on the first question, so I think I'll defer to, till we get to that? Is that what you're asking?
I'm talking about the feedback on refinement development standards you want to, you're not ready for that?
I'm not.
Okay, then why don't we address your question?
We're happy, I mean, if the commission wants a few minutes to relook at the materials or ask any questions before we do any clarification?
Why don't we ask our questions first and then we'll come to your questions? Can we do that?
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Constantine?
Thank you. Sorry to disrupt that.
No, that's great.
My only question is on the math. On the first question, it says what is the maximum number of developable units in Frog Pond East and South? You mentioned 5% single family, but on one of the slides, it has a 48.7% estimated maximum. I'm struggling at reconciling the numbers.
So that, thank you. So that maximum is the maximum overall number of units. And really, when it, that 48.7%, that is if at a kind of the expected?
Okay.
Build out what we expect to see as the maximum number allowed. So let me back up a bit. So if you were to have 1,625 units across the whole master plan, the maximum number of detached homes you'd be allowed, is that, is that number, that 48.7%?
792 units?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And I would just add that that is based on the maximum area of 60% that any one unit type is allowed to occupy.
Okay.
Yeah, so essentially, what, what that math comes from is going, taking the overall net area, taking 60% of that and applying a, a assumed density of 11 units per acre for kind of fairly dense detached homes. And that's where we get that number.
I follow that, I just don't get the 5%. That's, that's struggling.
So that is, so one of the questions that came up at a previous Planning Commission meeting was understanding like, what is the maximum? Because traditionally, we've had a minimum and a maximum in an area. But in an effort to be flexible to all housing types, the market, middle housing, we were less inclined to put a maximum density in this area. However, there's just going to be constraints that inherently create a maximum. So, but the question was raised, well, okay, so what would that then look like? What are the number of units we would be looking at? And so the reason for the five, only 5% single family is because we essentially were maxing out this area in terms of density. So we picked the highest density housing types, which would be multifamily residential, to say, okay, what if that occupied 60% of the land instead of the inverse, which is single family taking up that space? Then applying the most, the next most dense housing type, which is townhomes, to represent that middle housing, that higher percentage of everything but the 5% of your third unit type that you would need to provide. And then again, of that third unit type, when we said, okay, you have to do at least, you have to have a third unit type and it has to be minimum of 5%, we said, what's the most, next most dense, which would be the small, single family detached, even rather than like kind of a standard, single family detached lot. So we really were literally trying to maximize, if you got the most density out of this, what would that look like? Just to understand what is that upward bound when you take into consideration, and Dan's math took into consideration site planning constraints as well, like we didn't ignore roads or open spaces and we looked at the design standards of the unit types that we've been looking at. We used those same design standards as we did when we looked at what's the most reasonable. So the numbers where you're seeing the 40, whatever percent it was of single family, that's where we're estimating what we think is more likely trued up to the market in terms of, this is what we're seeing in other planning areas, including in Villebois, this is what we're hearing from developers and we're seeing in different site plans, like that's, that's more accurate to the market, but also looking at making sure we get middle housing and some of these small units. So it's integrating those also like desired variety types, but more close to the market. Whereas the maximum was literally just saying, you know, maybe we should ask that question. It was a good question you raised. Let's make sure it's not 10,000 units, which it wasn't. And just being able to understand that that is the absolute kind of upward bounds. Does that make more sense?
It does, because one's based on density, one's based on single family units. So now I understand it better, so thank you. Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Lot numbers I'm throwing out here tonight, so thanks.
Commissioner Hendricks?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. No questions?
Are you sure?
I'll reserve mine for my thoughts, which we'll do soon.
The only question I think I had was, what are we considering, I think at one point we had a dollar amount, what are we considering affordable housing?
So I don't have the affordable housing in front of me, so, and we're actually getting updated pricing from the consultant, I'm working on that now. But the affordable, in the master plan, there's affordable housing analysis that has that. I don't have that handy right now, but.
Okay. I was just wondering if the townhomes at 1,200 or the townhomes at, at 1,500 fit into what was defined as affordable housing?
You know, the idea is they're probably hit that like 120% type market rate of more attainable, and which is what we talked about at the master plan level, is we know that zoning alone is not going to solve, get truly affordable units out here. So there's, kind of was a two-pronged approach. We knew the zoning code with the target units could get some of those needed units that were developed by the market just through zoning. And at the same time, we wanted to make sure we removed any barriers to other affordable housing types that through like land acquisition or other programs that the city or county or other agencies may have in the future, that we're not creating barriers to those.
Got it. Commissioner Semenova, or questions? Commissioner Skoll, any questions?
Yes, so one question, understand, I understand the density calculation and all that, but in, in terms of how you're breaking it up between multi, or in terms of types of homes, but is there something cooked into this that tells us how many stories these should be? You know, are there, is there a percentage of single story, double story and, and three story, or is it just regulated by the height of the building?
So if we go back to the, it, there, in this, which is actually unique to the different zoning districts, we, we state the maximum height, both in terms of height and stories.
Okay, so am I to assume also when we get into the discussion about the, I've lost, go back to your other slide, please, where you were with the questions? The mobility ready units, are they, are they all single story or are they, or can they be two story?
So they can be?
Or three story.
Well, some of them, so there's two, I mean, they may be in like a, the five-story mixed-use building, elevator-served mixed-use building, right? So it could be five-story, but then if you're further out, then it's likely going to be a, either a ground floor in an apartment or an ADU attached to a ground floor of an, of a townhouse, or a standalone cottage or ADU that's single level. So it could be a component of a multi-story building, or it could, it could be a standalone single-story building. But again, we'll also allow a percentage of those mobility ready units to have, as long as everything's met on that single level, to also have an upstairs.
Okay. In terms of setbacks, are they, I think you touched on this, are they consistent with the, the setbacks throughout the community or out, throughout the city? Or is this going to be specific to the Frog Pond?
Great, great question. So in most of our plan development zones, the standard setback is five feet for a single level and seven feet for two-story. However, in 75, 80, maybe even more percent of those, of those subdivisions in recent years, request a waiver to go to five feet. So majority of, outside of like Villebois, majority of other subdivisions have a five foot. So that's a fairly standard. And so that is going along this principle that where it works to keep it kind of consistent with the rest of the community. In terms of going below that five foot for this, for the more narrow building types, that's very consistent with, with like a Villebois, where three and a half feet is a fairly standard, where you can have where develop, from a development standpoint, because you don't require an additional firewall or fire eaves generally at that setback, right? Because you're able to accommodate the wall far enough away, plus the eve that's at least like certain, like three feet from the property line and that has fire code implications. If you get closer, then you have to upgrade your construction essentially. The other component is three feet, three to three and a half feet, that's a reasonable way where someone could actually walk through.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we start with the top question, feedback on refined development standards?
I can maybe scroll back to the actual development standards here.
Commissioner Constantine, any?
No, no, no questions about those.
Any comments on, on what they're proposing?
No, I, I appreciate the work that was done. It seems reasonable. I don't have any further comments, no.
Commissioner Hendricks?
I'm supportive.
Commissioner Heberlein?
Mr. Polly, I'm okay. Yeah, I think, I think the work is good. I think it's all coming together and things are starting to make more sense. So I like, I like where it's headed.
Commissioner Skoll?
I'm, I'm okay. I think it's great work and, and I like where it's headed too.
Commissioner Semenova?
Likewise.
And I am good with them as proposed. I like the work.
Okay. And I, I mean, at this point, I, I don't anticipate great changes. There may be a couple other tweaks here and there, but I appreciate the, appreciate your time working through these over a number of work sessions as we move towards the end. So the next question then is let's go back to this variety of information. on variety standards, and especially information about Villebois, the mark, the cost implementations, how it compares to other areas. Does that increase your confidence? Or are there additional modifications that you're like, oh, well, in that case, we should do something different? So...
Commissioner Constantine?
I appreciate the analysis. It's nice to compare it to others, not only Villebois, but the other communities outside of Wilsonville. That's interesting information. So, I think, to answer your question, I think it, it builds confidence that we have some continuity. So, it sounds good to me.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yeah, similarly, I think the comparisons were really helpful. I feel like I have more clarity, which gives me confidence, so that's, that's where I'm landing after the additional information. Thank you.
Commissioner Heberlein?
So, so Mr. Polly, right now, we have 1,500 square feet in there as the definition of the small unit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I know you've given that quite a bit of thought.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. I would still lean towards 1,200 as a small unit. I know it's not a huge cost delta between the two, but that's just what feels right. Other than that, how does the additional information impact my input? I think it's a good truth test to see what's feasible. And, and it seems like we're heading in the right direction, other than the third bullet, which I'll wait for my turn on.
Okay. Commissioner Skoll?
I'm good with it. I mean, I think it's great comparable data, and it shows that we're in the, we're in the zone. And, I mean, I'm sure over time, between now and the time that this is eventually and finally implemented, it'll, it'll, it might move a little bit, but...
Yeah, and that's, that's a good point. So, I will highlight that. You know, I don't have any immediate plans to do it, but the code is set up that if like after we do our housing analysis, if we're like, we really have this additional need, we need, the, the code's set up where we can go through a process and tweak it to, you know, bump it to, bump one of these factors, but even prior to construction. Because we still have a couple of years before we're actually going to end up seeing any rooftops out here.
I think, you know, two things, you know, the, the demand, the demands may change or will change over time. And then I, the question was asked earlier about the, the cost of, you know, where the level of affordable housing was and all that. I think that'll play into this over time, too, pretty strongly.
Thank you. Commissioner Semenova?
So, the information is definitely in line with what the rest of the communities are doing in the similar areas. So, that was definitely increased my confidence, to answer your question about the variety of housing that we are requesting. And everything seems very reasonable in that regard. Just still doesn't seem affordable with those prices. But that, I don't know if that's, you know, having to decrease the square footage or what it is, but just knowing what people's reality is right now, yeah. Want to make sure that that's still at the forefront.
Yeah, I, I, to echo the, the rest of the commissioners, I like the fact that you said we're in the ballpark of what other communities are doing, so that leads me to believe that, that we're heading in a similar direction. I think I'm with Mr. Heberlein. I think 1,200 probably makes more sense when we start talking about affordability. Because if, the number that popped into my head was somewhere right around that 400. So, if we are concerned with affordability, I think we need to make sure that our development plans kind of fit that definition of affordability, so... But otherwise, I appreciate all the hard work. I appreciate the mental math exercise you went through to determine the maximum. It was interesting to, to see that what we're going to build is probably more around 40% of what a maximum is. So, that was, that was kind of good to see.
Chair, if I may, if you're interested, I did pull up the affordable housing memo that was done for this project, surprisingly, two years ago.
I remember.
Time flies. If you'd like, I can throw a few data points at the commission, if that's helpful.
Sure.
So, just, when I'm looking at this, the data that was coming forward is dated from October 2021. So, I think it's helpful just to understand that context. And as Dan mentioned, the team right now, and as you've heard in prior work sessions, is working on the housing, our future project, which will provide an updated housing needs and capacity analysis, and will have better, more accurate data, more timely. But this is the best we have at the moment. And in that, essentially, they, there's an Exhibit 3 that looks at housing affordability as a percent of median family income by housing type. And it kind of puts a box around the 80 to 120% median family income range to look at what they might be able to afford. And what is, what was shown as being achievable within that affordability definition was two-bedroom and three-bedroom condos, two-bedroom and three-bedroom townhomes. They didn't base it on square footage, but... And then three-bedroom, small lot, single-family detached. The four-bedroom, small lot, single-family detached, and large lot, single-family detached, all went above 120% area median income for the family. So, that kind of is where that line is drawn. Now, obviously, if you're in 60 to 80% AMI, then it's going to be a different picture. And you're going to be really looking just at the condo as your affordability. And the information that goes along with that for price points, which is, I think, what you were looking for, is for the condo, the two-bedroom and three-bedroom was priced at around $300,000 to $350,000. Your townhomes, two-bedroom, averaged $365,000. The range there was 300 to 400. If you're looking at a three-bedroom townhouse, it said 350 to 5, with an average of 425. And then your small lot was a, kind of is where it broke in the middle, so it went 400 to 550, which is about where it started to become unaffordable, with the four-bedroom being 500 to 650. And so, you know, I don't know how those match up with sale prices today, which again, would be part of the updated analysis, but some of those numbers seem a little low, and some of those also seem somewhat consistent with some of what Dan found. So, but the 400, in theory, is affordable. That's what this analysis shows, at least for our families who are in the 80 to 120% area median family income. So, those families can afford a home between like 400 and up to 550 is what it looks like. But that's not necessarily meeting the needs of 60 to 80, or 80 to 100. But what the, as Dan mentioned, a lot of what the memo said, is being able to build those townhomes at all starts to introduce products to a segment of the community that wouldn't otherwise be able to afford the detached units.
So, go back to your chart that had the 1,200 versus 1,500?
Yeah, and I'd be interested in what the other commissioners think about this. I, also, something I want to highlight is that this is a fairly, and when we originally had this at 12% at 1,200 square feet, this is a fairly low percent of units. This is like 5%. So, it's, so that's something else to keep in mind. We're not, this isn't 20% of units required to be this small. It's, it's just 5%, which would typically be met by smaller townhouses. Number of apartments would meet this, as well as, of course, cottages and ADUs.
I have a question.
Yes. Commissioner Skoll?
I'm going to probably put you two on the spot. Commissioner Heberlein, would, you, you have a preference for the 1,200 square-foot unit? Some of us are new to the, to the group here. Could you explain your reasoning?
Yeah, I, I think the, my goal is, is to try to, to get to a product that get, can get as close as affordable as possible. Recognizing that, that the difference, the difference between 1,200 and 1,500 square feet isn't great, but putting it smaller and having a hard requirement at least drives there to be some of that product there, which gives some group of people an opportunity to get something that may be closer to affordable than not. That's, that's my, my driver for it.
Thank you.
Agreed. Yeah. Any further discussion on that question? Onto question three.
I have a question related to this question. Mr. Polly, so, do we have anything, anything in the Villebois data that talks about the sizes of products that were built? Do we know how many 1,200 square-foot products were built in Villebois?
I mean, the data's out there. We haven't fully analyzed it yet, and we'd like to do that. So, I don't want to make extreme promises on it, because I don't know how messy the data is.
Sure.
Because that wasn't something that was consistently tracked over time. So, I, I, I'd like to pursue that and get an answer to that, because I'm, I'm, I think we're all interested in that answer, but I, I can't guarantee the data is there to be reliable.
Okay. Yeah, if possible, it would be great to see that distribution of, of size, of home sizes in Villebois, just to get that feeling where it is.
We know that a lot of the, the apartments, because I mean, it's 20% apartments. So, I think that alone, you're probably going to get there, with just the apartments. I mean, I don't know what the average size of apartments is out there, but... And then I know there is a number of, most of the townhouses probably are a little north of the 1,200, probably even between that 1,200 and 1,500. So, I think functionally, what, what the difference between 1,200 and 1,500 is going to be, is with 1,500, you're probably going to allow townhouses to meet a good portion of that, where if you set it at 1,200, you're probably more looking at those other non-townhouses meeting that 5% requirement, such as ADUs, apartments, and like cottages and such. And I mean, certainly, you can build a detached house or, or a townhouse that small, but it's probably the typical is not. But I would say, certainly, I'm confident the Villebois is well north of like 5% of either of these. Just based on the amount of multifamily.
Okay.
And the fact that there's quite a few, like one- and two-bedroom condos, and like in those condo buildings in the Village Center, that also would represent quite a few, so... Really, where the data's messing is how many of the townhouses meet that and not.
All right, back to your third question.
I, just, I mean, I don't want to put anyone on the spot that is not comfortable, but I'd be interested in if there's any other directive feedback on the 1,200 versus 1,500. Anyone wants to share? I mean, if you're like, not sure, that's okay, too?
I mean, I can share a first reaction to what you shared, just about like the 1,500 might provide more flexibility for more townhouses and those types of units. I like that concept of providing more flexibility there. Is that, that's what you kind of...
Well, I mean, those townhouses will be built one way or the other.
Yeah.
Really, the difference would be if you set it lower, and your standard townhouse is like 1,400 square feet, then, then a developer is going to have to make sure they're building at least 5% of something else that's not that standard townhouse, in order to meet that minimum. Which gets back to, I mean, part of, part of the plan is to encourage ADUs and that type of unit. I mean, that came out in a number of places in the master plan, so that's to be considered as well.
Any other comments for Mr. Polly? Go ahead.
I imagine the public may have some comments about that as well.
All right, onto your third topic.
So, 7.5 versus 10, or something else for mobility-ready?
Do you want to start, Mr. Heberlein?
Sure, why not? Okay, so, given the data from Villebois, the question that I would ask is, why wouldn't we go for 15? Villebois was at 16%. It worked out.
I think something to, to, to know is really the reason that it, and it's probably even greater than that, because there are a number of, I know even in the single-family, there's at least a dozen or so, like, single-level
Yeah.
detached homes, plus I, you know, plus some other probably master on main units that we're not accounting for. That, that's not a large percentage. But I think it's important to keep in mind, is that multifamily is not required out here. And I think the direction throughout the master planning is not putting any in place that would really, I mean, we want to allow it, but we don't necessarily want to require or drive it. Right? I, I think that, that upping it to that percent may drive the multifamily more, because really, that is the easiest way to meet that, that mobility-friendly unit. So, I think it's a balance to mobility-ready. I slipped up once, right? You know, you could, but I mean, I think there's not data to, I mean, while it could be done, circle back to the fact that there is 20% multifamily in Villebois. If you take out, let's say, you know, you take out half of that, which is probably more on balance of, you know, the percentage, like 5, 10% multifamily is probably more likely what you'd see out here, rather than 20%. You're cutting that in half to about 7.5%, right? So, that's just...
I'll go with 10 to 15, then.
Yeah, so... So, that's just, it just, the fact is that that's driven by the amount of multifamily.
Yeah.
Which is not going to necessarily happen out here. And, and again, you want to set that percentage where it's not going to, where it's going to kind of work with the other standards and not really drive one thing or another, but kind of get what you want without really interfering or pushing one of the other standards too much.
Yeah, I think it comes down to the question of what we really want. And, and if mobility-ready units are important, then we should look at a higher number. If they are less important than some other variable, then keep it lower.
Yeah, I mean, if you get to the larger, and there's the, the interrelatedness of land costs with mobility-ready, unless you're really talking about multifamily. Because if you're having a larger unit or taking up more land per unit, that increases the unit cost.
Yeah.
And that is one factor that needs to be considered when talking, balance with the mobility-ready requirement. So, you know, there is a good chance that, I mean, if we leave it, let's say, 7.5, 10%, that it may end up being exceeded. But, as I think through, I don't have confidence that 15% wouldn't have unintended consequences.
What about 12.5?
12.5 may work.
So, there's my, my window. I would, I would say, let's think about whether or not there's a higher number that makes sense. And if it does, great. And if it doesn't, I'm okay with 10.
Okay? Commissioner Constantine?
Dan, tell me one more time why increasing the mobility-ready percentage drives the development of multifamily homes? You're making that connection, and I'm struggling.
Sure. Because multifamily by nature, in the traditional, in the traditional, either if you develop your typical walk-up, like three or four-story apartment building, by nature, those ground-floor units are going to be flat and mobility-ready units. Right? It's going to happen anyway. So, a developer is going to look at, okay, what type of unit makes sense that I'm, that I can build anyway, and is already in my portfolio, then I don't have to redesign.
So, you don't have to redesign for, in other words, a single-family, I mean, a single-level home? It's not driving that development?
So, and because when, so let's move through the different units. So, and because when, so let's move through the different unit types, right? So multifamily is pretty easy to meet and will probably either way be where a majority of this. We know we want to get some single-level like for sale units. Cottages, and cottages standalone, it's, we're doing what we can to encourage it, but the data, the data out there is generally, and we're kind of refining this in Wilsonville context, and this will come out in other housing reports, is as you build a smaller one, the kind of the profit margins and the percent of cost of land and the hard cost are greater margin, are a greater percentage, so there's less profit margin. So it's riskier for banks and developers to do those. So there is a tendency not to do it from that perspective, right? So, and we want to encourage that. When you get to townhouses, because of land, you tend to go vertical, so it's hard to make those mobility-ready generally. The ADUs, which we are encouraging otherwise, can meet that, you know, even connected if it's like the ground floor of a townhouse, that could be a unit. Then when you get into detached homes, when you start putting all the facilities on ground floors, kind of similar to a townhouse, but not to the extent, you're going to start consuming more land and that, and the land cost goes up relative to the home square footage and increases cost. So the default really, and I mean, you see this in like a Villebois neighborhood, if you're looking, what would naturally be built in the market that meets this mobility-ready unit is going to tend to be those ground floor or elevator-serve apartment units.
As somebody that's, you know, has parents and in-laws in Villebois, you know, in their late 70s, this becomes more and more important, but it's a delicate balance that you're trying to reach between all these factors. And my other question, which you sort of answered, was what did the developers say? You know, is this economically feasible to achieve? And you're mentioning that the profit margin goes down at a single-level house. So that helps for me to understand the balance.
I mean, and there's a lot of factors in that. I mean, there's great profit if you're able to get a bit of land and a, because there's a premium on a, on kind of a larger premium finishes, single-level home, because there's demand for it in the market. But to get the affordable, the more affordable one, it becomes difficult.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hendricks.
I'm feeling like I need more information still, to like, I think some of these impacts that are being explored or talked about with like a greater percentage or like diving more into those potential impacts or development or whatever it might be, I think I just need more information. So I'm sorry, that's vague, but maybe, I don't know exactly what I'm asking for, but I know it's more, more clarity. Because looking at the one stat around the ACS data point, that was like, you said 5.8%. So that's the one stat that we're working with right now. In my mind, I'm like, okay, so 7.5 is more than 5. I mean, and I know it's not that simple, so where's the other information to help me make a decision between 7.5 and 10 or whatever?
There's not going to be a lot of like census or reliable how many Nick people actually in the community need it and are willing to move to get it. I mean, I don't think that data really exists to the extent this is going to get it more refined. I mean, certainly, we can bring more data towards how it interrelates to other requirements and the different type of units it may drive. We can get more of that data.
And so to that point, maybe it's not specific data, but maybe it's just continued discussion around potential impacts and like, I would prefer to, let me like process this a little bit more and then come back to it, but I like the conversations. But right now, yeah, I still feel like I'm like 7.5 or 10. I don't know how to make that decision.
Commissioner Skoll.
I think I'm aligned with Commissioner Hendricks, really. I do, I need, I need more information, really, you know, comparable data. You brought a data and some information regarding density and all that from other communities. What are other communities doing?
They're really not doing this to this extent.
So it's just not, like, I think I heard...
We don't have great data or great comparisons to other jurisdictions that we found either.
So the only thing we have is kind of an assumption based on what was done in Villebois
Yeah, I mean, that's one data point.
My other question is, is other than the single story, what truly defines a mobile, mobility-ready unit?
It's really being able to get around the unit, all the necessities in the unit without the use of stairs.
So it's a single story, but does it have wider hallways, larger bathrooms?
So this is not a requirement that it, that gets into building code. So that's why we, it's not, while we didn't choose the words like universal design or like actually accessible, because that's not this requirement. Mobility-ready really insinuates that it could be adapted, like someone could come in and put in lower counters, widen a hall or a bath, a bathroom door to, it's more adaptable than it is necessarily required by building code that you put in grab bars or low counters or anything like that. It's really about from, because we really don't have the mechanism in this code to do that. That'd really be a building code item. And so what we can do in this code is remove kind of those design elements, such as stairs or like the height, the number of stories and the stairs getting into the unit that would really prevent something being adaptable for limited mobility.
All right. I'm good for now.
Okay, Commissioner Semenova.
Did I understand it right? That, I think from what I remember in the plans, I think there was like one apartment complex, maybe two. And are you saying that we don't want to steer towards having more multifamily complexes too? We don't want to, we're trying to stay away from influencing that?
We want to keep a balance, right? We, while it's allowed, we don't, we're not requiring any multifamily, so we don't want to inadvertently require multifamily beyond what is the intention.
And why? Just out of curiosity?
Because that's the direction we really got from council. From the outset, as part of this master plan, is like, while we want it, we don't want to prohibit any unit types. The target unit types are, is not, one of the target unit types is not kind of commercial level multifamily, like the large apartment commercially managed apartment complexes.
Thinking more of the other, like just multifamily in general, not necessarily like the managed...
Well, but from a market standpoint, I mean, there's some market for us, there's limited market, as I understand it, for like a small, like, you know, six or seven-unit complex that's like managed by someone that lives locally. Really, most of your multifamily is really built as kind of a commercial level development by investors that kind of buy it in a similar, similar sense that they'd buy it like a shopping center.
Chair Carr, if I may add to Commissioner Semenova's question, is that part of the reason for the planning for this area is looking at the overall city's housing needs analysis that was completed in 2014? And one of the things that was really looked at there was what is the existing housing supply and then therefore the need, like what housing types should we be planning for? And while that essentially directed us to, yes, we need more housing of all housing types because we anticipate there to be increased demand and growth in the city of Wilsonville, so it pointed us to plan for all of it. But then it pointed specifically to two areas, one being the town center and rezoning for the town center, and then the second, to provide the community with an opportunity to set a vision for that area, but also to think about more multifamily, being it's right in the center and heart of the city and has better access to services and transportation. And then looking at the urban growth boundary addition of this land, because at the time, this land was not within the urban growth boundary, to bring, to request this land be brought in through the metro process in order to provide additional housing, primarily in the form of single-family and middle housing types. I mean, we didn't necessarily call it middle housing types, but similar to Villebois, we didn't call it that at the time, but it provided for all of those different types of housing. And part of that is because when we did, when we started this analysis back in 2014, at that time, 57% of the city's housing supply is in multifamily residential, and only 43% was in single-family, which includes townhomes and duplexes and all of those other housing types. That has shifted because of recent developments, both in some infill areas, but then also with Frog Pond West, because the intent was build some single-family. And so that number, I believe we're now at about 50% multifamily residential, about 10% middle housing. It's not quite 40% single-family detached because we have some mobile homes and I think a couple other ADUs, a couple other things that account for about 1% to 1.5% of the housing supply. And so that's part of the reason why we're not looking for a substantial amount of multifamily in this area, is because we're anticipating and planning for more substantial multifamily in town center. That being said, as you know, there's the kind of Main Street that will have multifamily above some commercial spaces, and then allowing multifamily in other areas that might give you more of that two-story or three-story walk-up unit type. So that's kind of the bigger picture, when you kind of zoom out of Frog Pond East and South.
I appreciate that so much, that we're not trying to solve all that within this...
Exactly, yeah.
Anything else?
No, that, that makes me feel better, because I think, I do think multifamily is kind of the answer to the affordability issues that our population is facing, and then having more mobility-ready units. I do think that that is probably the better answer for solving some of those crises.
So what is driving the need to put a percentage of mobility-ready units in this development? Is that coming from council?
That's from the master plan.
That's from the master plan. But the master plan doesn't have a percentage in it? It's just having a recommendation to...
Right, it doesn't have a specific, so arriving at a specific percentage is just a necessary finite thing in order to actually write a clear and objective standard to implement, right? We can't just say put some in there, right? So we have to come up with some specific number to recommend.
So at 1,625 units, what's the difference in number of units between 7.5 and 12%?
7.5 is 120 units, 12.5% is 200 units.
And 10 is 160, 120 for 7.5?
160 units for 10%.
And Dan, it might be helpful to kind of remind some of the commissioners, like when we went through the master planning process, like how this came to fruition.
I think it really reflects some of the conversation we've heard tonight, is that there's a recognized need, that there's an aging population. I'm sure we all know someone that has limited mobility, and we know that it either, it could be temporary or permanent at any point in our lives, and that really the housing stock in general doesn't accommodate for that well, because of other things such as land cost that kind of push things vertical and things like that. And so, and that, the population's aging, households are getting smaller, so the idea of smaller single-level units, we've heard that from the community, from decision-makers, is something that, is something that the market hasn't been producing necessarily at the level that meets the demand. However, that said, obviously, people though, that may work for them, there may be other things they, while it's like, well, I really like that small, single-level unit, but, you know, I can afford it and I like this large unit with stairs, I can adapt to stairs somehow. People may still make that decision, right? For other purposes, that they like the yard better, or they like the color of the house better. I mean, I, right? People make decisions. But we want to make sure that for those that really are prioritizing that mobility, the ability to have single-level living, that there is that option in the community, both on a rental level, which there are quite a few. I think you look at Villebois, I mean, a vast majority of that, especially at the more affordable level, is rental units. There's not really affordable, single-level, zero-entry for the most part. I mean, there are some, you know, subsidized, affordable apartment complexes out there, but most of the other are, you know, larger detached, single-level homes, which are fairly expensive.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you look at an apartment complex that doesn't have elevator service, a third of your units are ground floor.
Right.
If it's a three-story.
A third to a quarter, right? Depending on how many stories.
I wish I had a census stat that said how many, what percentage of our population has a mobility struggle.
Well, Chair Carr, I've been looking for that for the past 30 minutes as this conversation has evolved, and I cannot find that through the census data for the city of Wilsonville. What I was able to obtain was a statistic from the CDC for the state of Oregon. So it is not refined down to the city, and we can continue looking. But the number for a percentage of adults in Oregon with mobility disability is 12%.
And that tends to be more rural, the higher percentage in rural populations and in minority populations, as well as lower-income populations.
Mr. Chairman, can I have one more comment?
Yes.
There's a great sentence in your staff report, Dan. It says, "Increasing the requirement to 10% could create a higher likelihood that a unit would be available to the residents that do have mobility limitations." So in reference to your question about 7.5% and 10%, I mean, you're trying to balance the issue, but I think you conclude that that 10% would achieve more likelihood.
More likely to achieve. But I think, I am hearing the question, I don't hear strong voices for 7.5%. It's a question of is 10% or something higher?
Yeah, and that's just because if you look at an apartment building, right, they don't just rent the bottom floor to people with mobility struggles, right? So, okay. Are you looking for us to answer this, or are you looking...
Well, it sounds like I need to bring it back. I mean, the thing is, we can plug it, I mean, we're going to have to make one, a decision one way or the other pretty soon, but we don't have to make it tonight.
Okay.
So...
Sounds like we need a bit more information. Okay.
I think on behalf of Mr. Polly, I'll ask the commission if you, leaving tonight and are thinking about this issue, and you're thinking X, Y, Z information would be helpful, please send one of us an email just saying like, this is the type of information that would help me make this decision, or at least provide an opinion towards the final recommendation. And we may not be able to find all that information, but we will do our best to track down what does exist out there and bring that back to you and help you. If you could do that over the next week, that would be great. That gives us time to then try to find that information and bring it back to your May Work session.
Because there is limited time and bandwidth now to do this additional research, because it is, we are getting to crunch time, essentially, a lot of this. So we will do what we can, but want to be realistic about what we're facing.
Okay, even without further information, I'm leaning more towards the 10%.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd be curious from like the master plan perspective to see what that distribution percentage is for the entire city of what's planned to, not just for this little section of Wilsonville or Villebois, but given the, you know, the future developments as well, like what...
The future, yeah. And I mean, we don't know all the future developments, but I mean, generally, most... mean, generally, most units, I think, in town center will tend to be mobility-ready type units, because of their nature, that they'll, a lot of them will be tall enough, they're elevator-served.
You don't have to answer that now.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking through it. So, yeah, I'll see what data we can find. I know historic data, because it's, again, it's not something that we've tracked, right? To get it accurate may be difficult, but we'll see what we can find.
Okay.
Well, thank you, that's been a good discussion.
Yep, thank you. Yes, so, time does permit, the commission to take public comment on this work session item. Commission asks that the public comment be brief and specific to the aspects of the project, under discussion tonight, as presented in the packet material, not general in nature, or on components of the project, not the subject of tonight's work session. So we will take comments in the following order, those present in person at City Hall. So I will just say, as you're given the opportunity to comment, please state your name and address, or state that your address is provided on the testimony card, and then present any comment you would like to the planning commission regarding the matter. Please do your best to speak clearly and directly into the microphone, so other participants are sure to hear your comments.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mimi Dukas, I'm with AKS Engineering, here on behalf of West Hills Development. My address is on my comment card. I believe you are all familiar that West Hills is involved in the ASAR property, which is at the northeast corner of Stafford and Advance. It's one of the larger parcels within the planning area. It spans sub-districts four, five, and six. It's unique in its size, you're dealing with a district that's very partialized in other parts of the planning area, so you're trying to balance out very different parameters for our site versus some of the other sites you're dealing with. We did submit a letter to staff that's related to what's before you tonight. We have the unique distinction of being in Sub-District Four, which has the town, the mixed-use Main Street District, and that complicates the planning for Sub-District Four. And part of what we're asking for is special consideration on some of the variety standards in regards for middle housing and for housing types. Because we've got that mixed-use district that bifurcates the property, it's got out parcels involved, it has a wetland, it has a roundabout, all of those make, meaning all of these variety standards, very difficult. So I outlined those arguments in the letter, I think staff is working through that, hopefully that shows up in your next draft of the development code. One of the ideas that was talked about is potentially the live-work units may actually qualify as a distinct housing type, so that would, that would allow us to have a third type. Middle housing is very difficult when we've got the multifamily component. It would, it would replace some of the multifamily with townhomes, that's one of the options that we're talking about, but we would like the ability to do garden-style apartments, like we've shown you in previous sketches. So that's still an issue that we'd like to work through. Similar, on a similar topic, when you talk about the mobility units, you've put a lot of parameters on development within this, within this planning district, a lot of parameters, and it's very hard to meet all of them. We can meet a lot of your parameters for the small units, for the single-level living mobility, the ADUs check a lot of those boxes, but they only check so many boxes. If you want to increase the mobility standards, what we're struggling with is, across our entire master plan, we have plenty of mobility units, because we've got the elevator-served multifamily. We're kind of special in that regard, it's a hard type of development to do, but it feels like we should get credit for that. And so where we're having trouble meeting the mobility standards, staff proposed some flexibility when you are directly adjacent to another sub-district that has mobility units. So we have the, a lot in four, we can get credit for some of those in five, we can't get it for six, because it's over one more sub-district. And we're okay with the 7.5%, we're able to make those numbers work, but if you're bumping it up to 10, we're back to struggling again. And so I think you need to increase your flexibility on the master plan level, and allow more blending of the mobility standard across the whole sub-district. But in addition to that, I would still say that there is a balance point between accommodating a market, encouraging a market, and bucking a market. And I think what you're running up against in the mobility standards is actually starting to buck against the market. You're trying to create more mobility units than you actually need for the planning area, based on some of the statistics that staff have provided, but you're also accommodating mobility units in other parts of the city. And so I think Dan did a great job talking about the downsides of some of these mobility units, in that when you're trying to get as much density and affordability within this planning area, the mobility units are not cost-efficient, they're not helping with affordability, and, you know, if you're talking about a single-family detached home, to get all those components in there, it's more of like a ranch home, that ends up on a, on a big lot. The lots that we're planning for in Frog Pond East and South are not big lots. That was Frog Pond West, it was kind of special in that way. But the small lots, it's hard to balance, small lots, plus mobility, plus variety, plus middle housing, it's a lot of parameters. So I would say 7.5% is matching the market needs, it's providing the units that are needed for the population, in addition to the units that you have across the whole city. And I would still encourage you to allow mobility credits across all the master plan And I will also go back to, it's great that we're starting to see the finish line for the development code standards, and we've been working on our plan, working on our plan, staff's been trying to work through that process with us, and we've made great progress. One of the big unknowns for us are still the stormwater plans, and that's not before you tonight, but it can dramatically affect the number of dwelling units that can come out of the planning area. So the way the stormwater code is written right now, we believe it would decrease density by approximately 10%. We're still working through that with staff, sketching things out.
Hold on just one second, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yep.
Is, are you having a difficult...
Yeah.
There we go.
Thank you, Paula. Sorry, Mimi.
That's okay. So stormwater can significantly affect how many total dwelling units you have within the planning area. You still have the same amount of land and land cost, you have the same amount of infrastructure, but your number of units went down, so your affordability goes down. So we'll continue to work with staff on that, but I want you to know that it's still an outstanding item that affects the plan, and that the code really needs to have that resolved before we adopt it. My notes are all over the place. So staff talked about some of the other planning areas, and Dan pointed out that the other planning areas are not doing full mobility, there are many that are doing visibility, and we've talked about that previously. In terms of variety of housing, I love coming to planning commission meetings, I've been to a lot out in Beaverton, and I'm involved in Cooper Mountain as well, their development code is a draft, and they are going through the same debating process that you are. So we're still working through those variety standards, the location, we have the same concerns with the Cooper Mountain development code that we did originally with, with the Frog Pond code. We've worked with staff, and I think we've come up with a good middle ground, where we can get variety, but it's not hodgepodgey across the, each block, and we're working with Beaverton to try and solve that as well. And we appreciate staff's effort on the side setbacks, I think that's really going to improve the efficiency of the plan, and create side yards that are easily maintained, but still small enough to be efficient and have a good result. So those are my comments, I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Questions or comments?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
I don't know.
Acres online, zooming in.
I think we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But in the meantime, Ms. Simmons, do we have anybody online?
We do not.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dan Grimberg.
Put the mic up a bit, just so...
Sorry. Yeah, sorry. I will be short on my remarks, however. So, so I think Mimi expressed our thoughts very clearly and very well. I would like to comment on the small unit classification, is it 1,200, is it 1,500? And I assume most of that is driven by, you're wanting to create affordable housing products, right? So the size of the home is really a small part of it. The lot is a huge part of the cost, and so what, we build a home to the market, people want certain-sized rooms, it needs to feel comfortable, it needs to be competitive in the market, et cetera, and by reducing a house to 1,200 square feet, with all the other costs that we're going to be incurring in Frog Pond East and South, will make that the most expensive 1,200-square-foot home of anywhere in the market for a new home. And in my opinion, they will be very undesirable. By making it another 300 square feet, potentially, and it doesn't have to be, but allowing the builder to make it 300 square feet larger, and adding roughly $20,000 in cost, and it makes it a desirable home, that's good. That would be what we would want to do, to make the home marketable, to meet the needs of a home buyer. If we're concerned about affordability, there's other issues that can be addressed, in my opinion, such as reducing the infrastructure costs, which is a whole separate, big issue. It's millions of dollars that affect the cost of each home. The cost of the SDCs and the permits to, to actually just get the permits to build a home are very high, look at that. And then, as Mimi mentioned, there's the stormwater code that could impact the density as much as 10%, which is, again, millions of dollars, so that goes back into the homes that we're trying to sell. So it's a whole package, the size is a part of it, I understand where you're trying to go, I think there's probably better ways to get there, and make it a marketable home that's very desirable and would be very popular. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Did anyone submit an email?
No.
Do Commissioners have any additional questions? Any additional questions of staff? Hearing no further discussion, thank you, that concludes the work session. Excellent, all right. Next agenda item is informational. It was just City Council Action Minutes.
Chair.
Any questions of staff?
Yes.
Yes.
I saw that Housing for Future was at council, and I just wanted to, any high-level kind of takeaways from council, from that discussion?
Sure, I'm trying to...
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay.
I can also watch the council meeting.
I'm trying to rewind the clock, but it was primarily, the discussion was similar to the one that we had here, was to update them on the project, brief them, and then get, hopefully, a member of the council to be a liaison to that committee. They are still looking into that, they actually wanted to kind of discuss, have opportunity to discuss and make a determination at the next meeting, which was April 1st, and I believe that was forgotten. There were kind of other things, and I was out of town, and it just happened, so we're actually still circling up on that to figure out which city councillor will be a part of that advisory committee. They did have a number of questions, just about the overall scope, and there was an interest in potentially additional public outreach and engagement as a part of this, as a part of the project. You know, I think we have limited, limited grant funds from the state, we're doing our work through a grant from DLCD, and it has very limited funding. So one of the questions that we will be going back to the council with on May 20th, it's scheduled right now for a work session, is for staff to kind of provide a more holistic update on all the work we've done over the past couple years about housing, because we actually have received a lot of input from the community on housing issues, asked a lot of surveys over the past few years. There might be fatigue in engagement, which might be part of the reason we didn't get great results on the surveys that we had. But we're going to give a more holistic picture to council of what we have been doing over the past few years, and then also what's planned overall through the project, not just through the advisory committee, and have a discussion with them about, here are some ideas from the project team of how to expand that, and what that would mean to the budget, the city budget, because currently, city budget is only covering staff time, we don't have any money allocated to this project for other activities, including the consultant activities. So that's a conversation that the council is interested in having, and that we'll be bringing back to them on May 20th.
Yeah, thanks for that, high-level. And yeah, I was curious, because like, am I allowed to talk about, well, you can stop me if I'm... Sorry, my brain's going a million directions.
We'll stop you.
Yeah, well, because, you know, we're talking about housing for our future, and then meanwhile, we're hearing from public comment about the needs now, and what to respond to now, and so like, as a planning commissioner, I'm like, okay, so are we, we're trying to implement that broader housing for our future, or finding that balance, I don't know. So my mind is just kind of processing, so it's helpful to hear updates on that project. And the survey fatigue thing, I also am curious if it's like, you know, we've, how many times do we have to tell you, there's not enough affordable housing for you to do some, you know, it's, you don't see action.
Right.
And so, and then that comes back to us and our code decisions, and like, so this is kind of just coming full circle for me right now.
I just wanted to know what Rep. Neuron, if there were, what was the high-level of her discussion, as she presented stuff that she had done, or that they're working on down, down south.
I wasn't there, do you?
Anything, anything, anything that's impacting our city negatively, I guess, is a better way to look at that.
So Amanda Guile Hinman, City Attorney. So Representative Neuron really focused on, obviously, the housing, the work on the housing bills. Representative Neuron also was co-sponsor, I believe, of several bills that have to do with childcare and the like, you know, and so she spoke a bit about some of those, and then she also gave a preview of some work that is going to be, that there, that is being continued, continuing to be worked on during between sessions, and then some highlights of what we can expect for future legislative session, for the next legislative session. So we do expect, I think, probably that there will be some cleanup, at least, of the latest housing bill, probably will come forward at the next legislative session. housing bill, probably will come forward at the next legislative session, just because it'll be a regular, not condensed session, so, yeah. But she also provided a PowerPoint slide that I believe is attached to the council packet that talked about a bunch, about several of the bills that were of particular importance for her.
Got it, appreciate it. Anything else? Mr. Everly? Nope.
I was just getting ready to move to adjourn.
Okay.
I moved to adjourn.
Second? Yes, we're adjourned.